My computer. So we'll call a meeting to order. To roll call. Roger Hoyt, present. Walt Meisner?
Present.
Lindsay Butler?
Yeah.
Richard Wright?
Here.
And we have, can I see Larry or not?
No, I don't see Larry.
Okay. All right. I want to make one addition to the agenda if we have some minutes ready. I'll add that to the agenda. So I'll make a motion to add minutes to the agenda. Can I get a second on that? Okay, so motion to approve the agenda as amended with the inclusion of minutes. Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Richard Wright? Roger Hoyt, yes. Okay. So our first item is the the LTA service grants. How's in production plan? Jennifer, was Karen going to be on at all? She didn't have anything to update us with. Is that still the case? Jennifer?
Are you muted?
I, Karen was not going to be on today.
All right, so we'll just go on to the surface water protection and W district review. Jennifer, I have a printout I did last week with some edits, but is what we're seeing today? Any difference or?
No, that's the same. So it would be the letter dated to the board March 11th.
Okay.
And then since that time, I have received a few comments from you, Roger, on adding revising the medical, the marijuana section use table. And then I've received some comments from Marshall. And we're going to be meeting, I believe, on Monday morning to review the zoning map and some of the additional edits. But I do want to let the board know, and I'm not sure if Roger updated the board on this, but I had sent the draft revisions, the previous draft revisions to the state DEP and asked them to review it to see if they had any concerns. And they said their reply was looks good. So I think we're on the right path or the town's on the right path. So.
My comments were more typographical. And I know this is probably, it just may be, you know, some spaces between words and stuff missing. Just on the 3.3, the 3.31. Whatens and watershed, you still wanted the two words protection district or does that go away with?
That goes away as well. Yeah, it'd just be the water supply protection district. And I can pull this up on my screen if everyone wants to see what we're looking at. I don't know if that's helpful. It's up to the board.
Or is it, let me ask people if it's easier if they look at their file, or is it better to have it shared on the screen?
I would recommend sharing it on the screen only so that I, it's a long document, so I know where she's look, what she's looking at.
Okay.
Okay, so I can pull it up. I think I do have that ability. So let me see if I can find it. Um.
We are recording, okay.
What it's going to do. Give me one moment. And no one can see anything yet, right? Just me, okay.
Six other people?
Yep.
The share screen is on online, so. Should be able to.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if it will let me select.
I can do it if you want.
Well, what you can do is right click, right click on the share screen, the green share screen button at the bottom.
Yeah.
And you'll be able, I'm talking to Roger. Roger, right click on the share screen at the bottom.
Yeah.
It will give you the option of selecting multiple people.
Yeah.
You select multiple people, then she should be able to show the screen.
It should be because it's.
Let me try again then. It's only letting me do, and I've done this before, it's only letting me pull up. Let's see if I can do.
There you go.
No, you're seeing my email. Okay, so what I can do then is pull up.
If you do it again, it should show multiple screens and you can click on which one you'd like to choose.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to get my desktop. That's, oh, show all windows. There we go. So I can just show. Hopefully, I can go through my email and just, okay, so you can see my email, right?
Yep.
So I will just pull up what I sent Roger earlier with the attachments. Okay. So everyone can see that now.
I did forward your email.
It hasn't opened yet.
Okay, great. So this is the, you know, the same email that the board had before, but just, um, or same letter. So these are the different sections and Roger, you were referring to section.
Jennifer, we're not able to see, sorry, we're not able to, all I can see is your email.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Not, not the attachment.
So the attachment probably opened up on another one of your screens.
Yeah.
You just have to drag it over to this screen.
Okay, let's see if I can do that.
Or reset your share to that. Yeah.
And it's saying, okay. And here I minimized all of my.
Yeah, you just need to reload it, I think is.
Okay. No, still not viewing it then.
No.
All right, well.
Stop sharing.
Yeah.
I can hit stop share on my side.
There you go. And then if you do it again, you should get that.
Oh, I see. Okay, let's see. Because on my screen, it will, I'm seeing things I can select, but not, I'm not seeing my desktop, so let's do this. Share screen. Now, if I click it, nothing's happening on my end. Still nothing, not seeing your, are you seeing the document? No?
No.
No, let me do mine then.
Okay.
Here.
And do you want to go through every section? Would that be easier to start through or just the?
All right, is it, you're seeing mine now?
Yep.
Yep.
So you have, I think, Marshall's up. Marshall's suggestions, but we can go, yeah. I believe so, because he made his edit go up to the top.
Yeah.
Or maybe you don't. That could be mine. Yep, it looked like Marshall's, but it's not.
Well.
So walk us through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So why don't we go down? So whatever's bold, underlined and italic is new and whatever has a strikeout is a suggested deletion. So if you want to go scroll down, Roger. So you can see this section here is section two of the use districts. And we would be removing the wetland and watershed protection district from the use district. So there is one edit there. You can see the residential and the B business is on one line. That just has to be moved down. Excuse me, my allergies are kicking in. So you can see the W, the wetland and watershed protection district. We're removing.
Yep.
Okay, so that's that section. If you want to go to the next page. Thank you for making that edit.
Highlight what we talked about.
So this is the use table. So you can see the W is just being struck. That whole column has a strikeout.
Yeah, it's like three pages long too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So the one suggestion that Roger had was adding, when I looked at the bylaws that are online, it didn't have the marijuana use table section.
No, it never got merged in.
Okay, so that was one thing that Roger suggested that we add to this table, but with removing that W district from the table. So that'll be the next revision that we'll have for you.
What got put in the warrant article was a little, you know, table to be added with four lines.
Right here.
Last, yeah, the last go around of 5.22, the last go around that got renumbered unintentionally, or I don't know what, what happened. But instead of being placed under the, the retail was supposed to be into 3.24 as the last item.
Up there. Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out from your emails.
We based the bylaw aligning retail with businesses and then the other three types of marijuana facilities we put under industry. Because that's where we, what the guide we use for deciding what we're going, what district. Was retail was business and the other three were industry. And that's where they were to have been placed. They ended up getting their own little table at the end. Unnumbered, but labeled as special districts. And then the four items were numbered.
A question, a question on that. Wouldn't, wouldn't the growing section be under agriculture?
No, because the state law says it's not an agricultural classification.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that, that comes in with the, like the farm and other agricultural things that are. State law says it's specifically not an agricultural use.
Yeah, so that's where, Roger, I'm glad you're talking about that because I wanted to make sure I understood where you wanted it inserted. Because on here, you're marking it as 5.24. And 5.25.
Did I write five? It's supposed to be.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure if that was a typo. You meant three then. Good, because I, then I started looking at the bylaw and I'm like, wait, I can't find that. So you're saying it should go where you have it, 3.24 for the marijuana retail? And then the 3.25 where it is for industrial.
What we really should have as an existing table is those four items at the end.
Okay, so just put it at the end.
Got written.
Okay. Add it, so we'll add it after 3.27?
Well.
Want to do it.
As far as it exists in a strikeout, that's where it would be. And then they should be, as a change, put in their correct place. Because that was the intent of writing the bylaw was that they were in those groupings. And what I think I commented that if we go into the parking tables, which assigns parking requirements by uses, we don't have anything that would push, put those four categories in the parking requirements. Because we have
Okay.
Parking for business, retail, parking factories, industrial. It would, I mean, it's not a critical thing because we're, it's all special permit. It's not something that can go incorrect. But it's just, it's really where they were intended to go, you know, for updating the table.
So Roger, let me just clarify, you're saying not to add it as 3.28 after this in its entirety like this, or do you want it broken up with the first line of marijuana retail under the business and then the other three?
Well, it's got to be, initially, it's got to be at the end.
Okay.
That's what was written. That goes in as, in this case, as a strikeout. And then they get put in bold or whatever in the proper place.
Okay, so we'll have two parts for the bylaw.
Yeah.
Amendment. All right. Add in bylaw, so two, two articles or two motions.
It essentially is a separate one because it's not related to the W or the wetlands, but it's making the table correct. You know, now we're Yeah, it's two articles. You know, if they both pass, correct. If one does and one doesn't, it's intermediate.
All right, I'm just making notes here. And growing, processing. Does the town have these? Anyone that has filed an application for these yet?
Yes, yes, we've got, well, Walt can tell you what the current status.
We actually have three, we have four. Four in process. One is manufacturing. One, one is three cultivation, manufacturing and retail. And one is, then we have two. One growing, two, two potential growing, but they're all in process. It takes forever and forever to get them through the process. It's, they're not making it easy for them.
Yeah, well, do we, I should know this, but do we have a cap on how many we can have in the town?
We are only capped by retail, number of licenses, and we only have one retail request for license. But on agriculture, as far as not agriculture, but in.
I know, and your cultivation.
And cultivation, I think we can have several. So we're okay on that. But I, I, I don't know if we can get. I don't, we may be limited to one retail, maybe two, but I know we've only have one retail application.
Yeah, well, the intent was to start at the minimum.
Yeah, well, also too, then retail, it's directly related to how many alcohol licenses you have. The number.
Yeah, it's, it's not so much, it's however many you're allowed by your population. It's not the actual, according to what I got from Debbie last month, it's not the actual number of ones that are issued. It's the ones that are allowed by the population, so it's not likely to change or go up or down. She said it's been, you know, whatever our population's been pretty stable, so that's what I got.
Okay, good. All right, so I'll work on this table part. So thank you for clarifying that. That makes sense. All right, do you want to go to the next page if anyone doesn't have any other questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, Roger, you're in control.
Uh-oh. You're all in trouble.
Okay, so now this is section 3.3, which is the special condition. So that's again, removing the wetlands and watershed. Just striking it.
Yeah, that's not going to be easy.
Strike.
I can do that after.
Yeah.
I don't know why it didn't strike out. It was straight out, struck out on my side, but okay. So then you can go to the next. Let's see if there's any other sections. I'm just.
Yeah, I think you can just
Yeah.
page through slowly because we can see all the times there's a you know, typo there.
Yeah.
Cross out the household hazardous waste collection centers. Why is that crossed out?
Where are you?
G2.
We lost it.
G2?
G2, um. Hazardous waste collections or events operated. Let me just remember why we crossed this out. Household hazardous waste collection centers or events. It was just, um. Use is not agriculture. It's being compliant with their requirements, but I'll have to look at that. Under G.
Do you think because they made changes to that CMR, maybe?
Yeah, that was just one of the things that we had.
What is this?
It's a Massachusetts regulation.
Right, well, and that's, that's why these changes are being made because of the, being compliant with DEP.
Okay. Okay.
So for no, you know, there is no other reason. It's just all being compliant.
Water supply, wetlands.
So nothing else is changing there.
Keep going, Roger.
And there could be some, you know, like that space is off here and there because we had to take a PDF and convert it to a Word document. So sometimes the things can be off a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, so now down.
Word document from Mary?
What's, what's app?
Did you get the actual Word document from Mary?
Um, I ended up using what we had. I had our IT department, you know, convert it.
Yeah.
So. So now in section 3.32, we're again just removing the wetland and watershed word. We're almost there.
To the extent feasible.
Yeah, getting rid of that and then it's all new.
All new.
And then the same thing with G. And then the last is the flood plain. The next section down. That's getting rid of subdivision standards for the flood and just putting flood plain district, new development standards. And then the last, number four.
Well, that's weird.
Okay.
Yeah, you, I might get Mary to send me what the town has.
Yeah.
And make the edits in there.
Yeah.
So Ben, just, so that's all that's, you know, was changed and that's what was reviewed by the state. And they looked at it and said there are no problems. Marshall sent some edits today where he wanted to add in the actually, some of the actual regulations from the state. So it's 310 CMR 22. In some of these, in two sections where he wanted to just pretty much cut and paste and insert it. Just to make it, to clarify it more. So we can review that at the next meeting.
I don't know, I mean, Jennifer, do you think that's a little, you know, repetitive? If it's a state regulation, they have to follow it anyways. Why are we?
Right, and so that's why I didn't want to put it in here yet because I wanted to look at what he was recommending. Because the problem is, is when you're covering, you know, copying and pasting, exactly if they change anything, then yours is outdated. So I'd rather just refer to.
This, refer to the regulations.
Right, exactly. Because there was also one section in this bylaw that we ended up eliminating that it said refer to the list of, I think, list of chemicals or whatever that's on file with the Board of Health. And when I reached out to the Board of Health, they're like, we don't have a list. We just go by what the state uses. So that's why we're crossing that out. Yeah, so you can see definitely where that's highlighted. That's the converting, the PDF. So even down at like the existing. So I'll get that from, is Mary on this call?
No, you just set us up.
Okay, so I'll get a, make those copies, make those edits directly on that. So that's all. And then the other thing is revising the the, the map. So we've had a lot of meetings with, with Rod, well, not a lot, a few meetings with the building inspector, Roger, Marshall, and then our IT department about removing the wetland and watershed protection from the zoning map because it's been a lot of what I understand, issues or conflicts. So we're having, trying to schedule a meeting Monday morning to finalize that. That's been a lot of work.
Say what the intent was, we, when you take the W district out, you're left with voids.
You're left what, Roger?
We're left with voids, voids on the map. And most cases, it's just blending in with the RB district that surrounds it or the adjacent district. But we get places like down by Old Cairo Road to Railroad. And that one is a matter of just connecting a straight line through the void and if you look at the map, I think you all forwarded it. The biggest concern we have is area near the transfer station, north side of 12, industrially, or the yellow area on the map. It's, in, in researching a little bit, and Marshall did, he checked all the parcel IDs on the assessor's website. But that area seems to have been added with the boundaries based on parcels. And not a certain district or geographic thing like a map or a road. So when you go through and identify all the parcels, you end up with kind of a zigzag line, but that was the intent and some odd things with it, but they, they follow lot lines. But you ended up with looking at the assessors, some of the parcels that have homes on them or whatever are listed as RB. When it looks like the intent was that should all be the light industrial. So if that's, and I, in my opinion, the intent of this is just to deal with the W district removal and not be changing anybody's zoning district. It's more of filling in, connecting the voids, so. That's what we're.
There's no action you need from us on this, Roger? Just simply a working session to.
Well, we need to. What we've done so far on this is we put out yesterday the advertisement to garden moves to advertise for the public hearing on the 14th. So it'll be in the newspaper next week and the following week or two times, whatever it is, but we need to have a document available for the public to view once the ad goes, shows up in the newspaper.
Then we would, then we would vote, vote our support on that public document.
Once it's. That's kind of what we need to do tonight is if we can approve it with whatever edits we discuss. Then we can have that. It is here, we're only making. Grammatical changes to what we're currently looking at. And if we're not making any other changes to the bylaw part of it. We need to vote on that tonight.
I, I think it's rather straightforward, so I move, I, I move approval with, with the discussed. Edits and assuming that all of the grammatical and the spelling errors will be corrected as well.
I, my only, I guess my only concern and Jennifer, did you say with? The regs that, um, Marshall wanted to put in here, is that what's being proposed or? I know that's what he's, he wanted to put them in there.
Right, that's what Marshall wants to put it in there, um.
Personally think it's, like you said, so then, so then they're going to reference. Eggs are going to change and then in some other document, um, some other. One of our bylaws, it's going to reference, go look at, you know, whatever our bylaw says and then our bylaws. If the regs. This change, what he's putting in here. I just, it's kind of not. Wise to do that because anytime there's a change in the regulations. We should be making the changes to our bylaw and again, then to go through that process like we are now. I mean, it's a little, it's a little redundant to be honest.
And just to be clear, it's not what you're seeing here, so. Um, and I think he, you know, again, I haven't had time to review it because I just received it today. But he is saying in accordance with, you know, three ten chap, uh, CMR twenty two. But I think he wants to put in zones, like what is zone A, B and C? As it relates to the zoning map, but if there were to be further changes, how does? Ashburnham handle that?
Wait, the same way we're doing this right now, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to meet about it. We're gonna have to advertise, um, and then any. Proof through it through town meeting. So I think it's better to just reference C, um, you know, CMR. Ten, three, you know, mass water resource management program. If we have that.
Yeah. No, I meant if, if, um, we decide, you know. After today's date, after the advertisement, you need to have something on file. Can you make any further edits to what you're reviewing before town meeting or does that have to be made on town meeting? Every town is different.
Um, I believe we can. Um, at the public hearing, we can make changes.
Okay. Okay.
That's only the public hearing, so, um, yes, it then becomes. Um, we'd have to, just like we did the marijuana one, present a different version at town meeting. And then what people saw at the public hearing, but that's the tentative, tentative public hearing. So I can bring up, I think. Uh, Marshall's comments. And I think it's important to, to, to review them because, you know, they're a major. Portion of why we're doing this, so, um, I will share my screen again. If I can.
Roger, I agree with Lindsay that we don't need to add stuff that may be changing and we have to go back to, to, to do all this stuff and we can just reference it. I think that, that's a simple way of making it happen and. It makes so much easier for the next people in line behind us not to have to go worrying about this thing to change ten times.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in fairness to Marshall, I mean, what he might be proposing might be fine. Um, again, and here it is, so this might, I think he's just trying to clarify more of the map. The map has been, so this might be fine.
Um, this, yeah, let's see what this. Yeah, um.
So this is, yeah, I have no issue with this.
Yeah, I think he's just trying to clarify the map and you can see it's in accordance with and he's trying to do. You know what the zones are and then there was one other.
Now, um. If boundary identification. If we delete something, we should. I think we should just delete it and leave it blank and not renumber the, the following ones, just because. It's the same thing, if, if there's references further down in the bylaw. We haven't confirmed that. To go back to say, well, we referenced point two five E, well, if it's changed on here. And we didn't correct it. Later in the document, it's confusion.
Yeah.
Same as page referencing a page number.
Gotcha.
I'd also recommend if you put deleted there that you put a date.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. At town meeting.
Yeah. And, okay, this is his comment here, we deleted a row. Is that different than we're looking at? Let me, let me look at my printed copy. Yeah, I don't know why he highlighted that, that's change you made. What did he change here?
Yeah, that. Three, three, three.
Three, 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 um. Why did he? Highlight all that.
Protection district and he's saying no building. Looks like he wants to just cross that out. You know, and we haven't had a conversation with him. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend tonight to, to understand why he wants to cross that out.
I mean, it does seem, well, I'm looking prohibited use. So there. I mean, I'm good with that prohibiting no building structure intended for human occupancy shall be constructed. I mean, that's a little. That, that's a, you know, a lot of, um. I would agree with that. It, it does seem like a little too much to say that structure for human. Occupancy can be constructed within that water supply protection district.
Cannot be.
Yes.
I'm not definitely here, you could answer, but is he trying to say take that whole thing out of there?
I think so, yes. That's why it's all, the whole thing is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know why, you know, he has the red no, but. May, maybe meaning that nothing can go there, so it should just be struck out.
Well, I, I mean, I can, you know, I, I, I would amend my motion to. To support, you know, subject to. Sort of clarification about, you know, why that's, what's his argument for taking that out? I think, I think Lindsay's right though. I think that's going to be simple enough.
Yeah, I, that's what it looks like he's doing. He's taking the whole thing out because then it's. He rewrites it three, three, three. Special conditions and water supply protection.
What happened to three, three, two?
I don't know, scroll up.
Yeah, um.
Is it not in there?
Yeah, three, three point three two is prohibited uses in the wetland, so go back down, I think you were there.
So that must have been what he. Struck out.
Yeah, if you go back where you were, Roger.
He just took it out completely.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, he, he's taken out that three, three, two.
Oh, yeah, prohibitive use, he just went by it.
Oh, that whole paragraph shared because it's just a repeat of the previous one? Is that what we're looking at?
I don't know, can you scroll up a little bit? Feel like, I feel like you.
Yeah, I don't know.
Where's the three, three?
Three, three, two. Prohibited uses in the water supply protection.
Okay, yeah.
So that's what, it may have, it may have been two separate categories. For wetlands and water supply. As two items, two paragraphs. And the second one, we just. Right?
No, well, three, two is still there, so he still has that there. He didn't, there's a few changes. Nothing left. And then went down to three, three, three. I think that's.
He's just saying it's redundant.
Yeah, that, it's a repeat.
Yeah.
I think it was in originally two paragraphs, two separate items because there's two different districts it was referring to. And now we only have one. So what's the?
Yeah, and the three, three, three starts with the special conditions.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Right, so this just needs to go out. Completely because it's already covered. Well, is it? Our structure is covered in this one?
Three, three, two prohibited uses.
Waste water treatment going on, keep going.
I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna go pull up my laws real quick.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess what else are we, are we good with this one?
Yeah.
My motion still stands.
Okay, and we'll just clarify that as well.
Clarification for that is fine.
Three point three, three. He says that reference doesn't exist.
Let's see.
So he says three. CMR ten point oh three doesn't exist.
Yep, so that's, that's fine, you can turn to that.
We delete that.
I would say in coordinates and leave the three, three, three CMR. And just get rid of the, the lawn care up until the three. That's the problem, where so many things change.
Yeah, I don't even think, I would, I wouldn't even reference it. I would just say we have fertilizers, pesticide, um. I don't, yeah, that's what I think.
Or just get rid of the whole thing.
By referencing. Many of these, that's, I think, kind of why we're in the predicament we're in.
Or you could say is, um. Um, you know, DEP guidelines or best practices. Or just leave it with manufacturing labeling as. As Marshall state, suggesting.
Yes, I mean, I'm good with that.
Just take, okay.
I mean, if they're, if they're in an area anyways, that's governed by, you know, in conservation as jurisdiction over them, they're gonna tell them the same thing. They're gonna tell them what chemicals they can and can't use, so.
Okay, and then. Is there anything else from Marshall?
Yeah, I agree with this comment there, but I'm not sure. How we would clarify that. Or I guess I would think so, if you're good, if you're gonna get a special permit for, um. Exceeding impervious surface more than fifteen percent or twenty five hundred square feet. You need a special permit, so maybe, I mean, I guess maybe you don't, it doesn't need more clarification. It means the threshold can be exceeded.
With a special permit.
Yeah.
So you're allowed to do up to fifteen percent without a special permit as of right. Or twenty, and then if you go over that, you use special permit and you need a recharge. Um, artificial recharge, is that, uh? With the underground. Systems, is that? What it's referring to?
Yeah, I mean, we can get more information from Marshall on that special permit shall be required for the rendering impervious. Of more than fifteen percent or. At a system.
I mean, I think he's trying to say that if they do that, then they need to come up with some system of artificial recharge of groundwater. But I get, I don't know, I think the verbiage that's in there is fine, you know, when it comes to special permit, that would just be up to the board to. Decide what they'd like, you know?
Yeah.
Which most likely it would end up going to, you, you probably have a peer review and they would tell you, or they're gonna come up. If they're gonna change that much surface. They're gonna account for that anyways, because this is all part of, um, you know, there's, there's state and federal regulations they have to meet.
So we're okay as it's written.
Unless anything changes up to, um. The public hearing. And then if you go down under this line, so now we had floodplain district regulations, the only thing we were changing in that. Was the new, which we reviewed earlier. And I don't know, Marshall's got the word to be deferred and I'm not sure why. He's saying that.
Said in, where is this?
That was underneath where we just were, if you're in the Marshall, our, um.
Yeah.
Handout, keep going down.
I'll go down.
Yeah, now go up above that. Just, yeah, see where he's added to be deferred.
Yeah.
And I'm, I don't know why he's saying that.
Is that?
Is it because the floodplain district's changing? I don't know.
Is it, it is not included in the DEP changes, is that what he's saying then?
Yeah, I, and the only thing that we were changing in there were, um. A couple, you know, a couple, um, words and eliminating.
That was the title of B, right?
Yeah, B.
Changed the words there.
And then 1, 3, and 4.
Then what's happening with 1, we're adding those words?
Yeah, adding that, yeah, minimize, and then adding or eliminate.
And base flood elevation.
And these go back to, you know, the original Marshall's suggestion, so I'm not sure now why he's saying "to be deferred," so.
Well, I think it's a matter of scope of, if this, is this a change that's outside of the DEP part of this? The bylaw intent was to update it per DEP change requirements, and this is outside of that scope?
So I guess the planning board can either, you know, not bring this forward, or bring it forward and discuss at the public hearing then, and then decide, you know, then to strike it.
Yeah, that sounds good. I guess what we can find in the meanwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put "to be deferred."
Yeah, I think it's better to leave it in, and it's easier to remove things than add things.
I don't disagree with any of the comments, too, either, it's...
So our next steps are that Marshall, Roger, myself, and the building inspector will meet with, meet on, we're trying to schedule it for Monday morning, and also meet with our GIS person at MRPC, and then go over, you know, what Marshall's suggestions are here, finalize things.
Yeah, let me bring up the map as...
So that we're in shape for town meeting, and remind me when your town meeting is?
Yeah, it's... I don't know.
May 4th or something, first Tuesday in May. I'll bring up the map, and I think it's in its current interim state with everything.
And there were a lot, lot of going back and forth revising that, so.
It should be in good shape other than the area north of Route 12 by the transfer station. See if I can...
That was the one you sent earlier, right, Roger?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, it's raining. Try this again, otherwise we'll have to...
Now, we're not, are we discussing changes to that now?
No, I think Roger just wanted to show you the updates.
And, and get direction of the board to agree on a direction for it.
It's not letting you open it, huh?
Yeah, it's, uh, it has the agenda open.
So you're trying to open the map?
Yeah.
I just had it open a while ago.
Roger, maybe if you close that email and open it up again, maybe it will let you, I don't know.
You know what, Roger, I'm trying to open it on my end, and for some reason, I'm...
You're getting the same thing?
You know what, I did, okay, so let me, let me share my screen.
All right, you should be able to now.
Okay, can you see it?
That's the, that's the 2007 map.
That's just a FYI thing of what we were looking at. Let's see.
I don't know where it is then.
It was in the email you sent.
By zoning, no, that's not it.
No, the one you sent out today, I forwarded to people. Meeting tonight at 6, is it?
Yeah.
It's in there?
It should be.
Presentation. That's bylaws and...
But I I attached what, no, that's that.
It's an actually mail down.
And that might have been what, what Marshall's
Yeah.
What Lindsay just showed. Because Marshall, I think.
I don't see it, well.
Let me see if I can find it.
Hope, I think it was the next one, the next email, that you were just one under the one you had, I saw map.
Yeah, I can, I'll share, I'll show it to you. Are you seeing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty small on my screen, but I don't know if there's...
Yes, see what I can do with that. What we did was, I'll just start at the top here, along the green business district, it just refers to green business, because that's what's around it. These other areas, are you seeing my cursor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Those are all pretty simple. We get down to here. We just will divide it right along the, I think it's the rail line, so east of that merges in with the adjacent industrial, west of that blends in with the RV. Down here, there are roads to RA, because that's what's around it. That's when we get over here. This actually looks pretty good. I think this is more recent than what we last had, where these areas all are LIB, the yellow. And this, this one right here, this should go to yellow rather than RV. Because I don't see anything where it was intended to be otherwise. And this one, that should be RB. I'm trying to, I'm going by what I found, looking on the assessors' maps and parcels lines. So it follows this, and then it comes across, and the lot line kind of cuts, does show that little peninsula there. So it's 1,000 feet from over the street is here, Lincoln Avenue. That's compliance, and it stays 1,000 feet back of Sibley, and it follows a lot line up to here, follows a lot line across that, and over here, and then down, for some reason, there's a V there. But it looks like, what I understand in talking with Richard and Mark, who was on the committee at the time, that this was intended to be LIB. And some of the parcels in here are on the assessors' database as RB, which really has no bearing, because zoning map is what the was approved at town meeting. Not the assessors' database, so unless we find some other reason why they shouldn't be LIB. You know, Conservation Commission would have their jurisdiction over the boundaries of any streams, but that's our only area, I think, of confusion at this point. And then we will have a a more up-to-date boundary for the water supply protection district, is that right, Jennifer?
Can you repeat that question?
For the water supply protection district, we will have a more update reference for that?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so I think, you know, on Monday, hopefully, we can resolve, resolve this and have a clearer map.
What's shown here, what's proposed for the updated?
The, the blue hash tag?
Yeah.
Jason, our IT, would have to confirm that, let me just, let me look at my map.
Does it, does it show it, what does it say at the bottom, is there a key on it?
Yeah, so I'm looking at mine right here, that's the water supply protection district, so anything with that blue hash tag? The hash.
Go back up.
But it is defined, it does have a definition outside of the zoning map of what that boundary is. Is that correct?
And I think that's what Marshall was trying to do as well here.
Yeah.
So you can see on that one section that he was trying to do is clarify that.
In, in the bylaw part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you can always report back to us, Roger, right?
Yeah, yeah, but my, my question, what I'm asking for direction is, are we okay with all the other areas that are fairly straightforward? It's just this will go to yellow based on the parcel lines that appear to be intended here, unless we find some other reason from that committee to define it differently.
I'm cool.
Roger?
Yes.
Can I ask you about the green business district in the very north part of town?
Yeah. Oh, hi, Lorraine.
Nearly 2/3 of that is permanently protected open space, does it make sense to have it tagged as green business when it can never happen?
That's outside of the scope of what we're doing, I believe, if it's not related to the W district.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We weren't gonna make any changes beyond that beyond what we're doing with the bylaw.
Okay.
That's a discussion for another time, I think. Is that what you're asking then?
Well, I, I wasn't sure if it was, if you were talking about the whole town or just certain sections, but I thought I would throw it in, seeing that it was here. And I could see that when we update our open space, our open space plan,
Yeah.
we're probably gonna change that, so the two maps would not be the same. Well, I mean, it would, we would show the zoning map, but as you depicted, but we would have a dispute over whether or not that should actually be designated.
And that's, that's like, in a lot of towns, if you think about it, you have open space in commercial areas that's protected, you have commercial, I'm sorry, open space in residential districts, and the zoning still is there, but it does, it's not changing that use of, of the open space, so.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, at this point, we're just trying to fill in the voids created by the W district.
Okay.
Being taken off the map.
I mean, our whole zoning map has to be re-looked at at some time, but for now, it's just about the W district.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that's a discussion for the next item on the agenda for DTLTA. But are we set with what we've got here, that the map is okay with this being divided as shown, and the yellow area getting resolved only if we find anything contradicting to making it all yellow or by the parcel lines?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, same here.
Because there's no, when you took that district layer off the map, there's no background information there, it's just a void. So I guess, are we wrapped up with discussion on the W district bylaw?
I think so.
Okay. We move on to the DTLTA, where it is around 3, right, Jennifer, that we can apply for?
Um, I, I think you've been talking to Karen about that, so you'll have to update me on...
What I had thought might have been a candidate was the cemetery mapping database, but that's not eligible for DTLTA, that was Towne Shirley did that through other, other means through MRPC. What's suggested is either we do another chapter of the master plan, or another suggestion was updating the zoning map as best we can based on the corrections. What's missing from the current zoning map that was on the previous black and white zoning maps was dimensions for district boundaries that aren't otherwise natural features like roads or streams. Such as, we've all gone through this one up on 101 and 119, this business district is defined by distances. Even though the green and the colors are put in according to those distances, the information is no longer conveyed. That occurs with some of the areas along the RB district off of, like, Lashell Road is, I think the answer is 1,000 feet, but it may be to scale on here, but the information isn't conveyed, like here, along here, too, from Center Street.
I think that's a better idea, Roger, to do that. I mean, if we, we don't have anyone in-house who does GIS, they can't do this, I mean, somebody can write a chapter of the master plan, that's just my opinion.
That, well, the other option, and Karen, I guess, year or two ago, we applied for a different type of grant that would complete the remaining chapters of the master plan. We didn't get approved for that, and we could apply again in May. No guarantee the results would be any different. Do we want to, you know, pick another chapter, or do we want to have?
Well, then if you already, if, if there's already been a proposal for that, then I would, I would just resubmit what they, what was sent in previously for the master plan chapters.
And that's, that's to a process.
Which chapters, which chapters were?
I, I don't recall which of the ones we hadn't done. I know we've got a D L T A for the land use chapter for this year, around one was approved. And the second one was mapping for the water and sewer lines. To get them in a, you know, a combined map.
And then housing too, you said? Was that another one?
That's last year, so it's much. I think there's open space plan that needs to be updated. There's there's arts and culture or.
Yeah, we could do either. I mean, have any of the other boards voiced anything or?
No.
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 And any staff from town hall, they, there's nothing they want to put in for?
I haven't heard other than that, that comment about, you know, other chapters was from Rose Marie and Karen's response was, if you want to apply again for the larger grant to do, do main chapters. My thinking is we do something that has some tangible, short-term results like the mapping, the zoning map rather than another chapter of the master plan, which is going to be a year or two anyway from being done and.
I think the zoning map makes sense as well. Again, we don't have anyone in-house who does G I S. It's, you know, a smaller project.
And it assists us in, in land use and doing your job and avoiding you know, difficult questions of where's my boundary and stuff. The other thing Sarah would like to have is more of the roads like and, you know, at least to highlight or something if they're a town road or a private road, some way to.
I think, yeah, I think Jason said he was going to do that. And I think one thing, Jason is the G I S staff person at M R P C, the director. And I think each town, he said, is entitled to about eight hours a year of, you know, free G I S assistance. So I think that sounds like a, a good grant, especially now that you're looking at or a good D L T projects and it's your already working on his own.
We need to make.
Doing the map is exceeding that eight hours. I think is what his point was.
Yes, right, right, exactly. So I think that's all you have is.
Yeah, and it's an eligible project.
Yep, yep.
Do we need to vote on that, Roger?
Yes, then I can write the.
Okay.
So if someone wants to make a motion.
Second. Lindsay.
To apply for a D L T round three grant to update and correct the zoning map.
Motion came from Lindsay. I seconded.
We need a roll call.
Did you freeze?
I think he did.
I think he froze.
No.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yeah.
And Roger Hoyt, yes, I'll get that letter out. So I'll just stop my share here.
Are we done with Jennifer now?
I believe we are.
Please, sir.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much.
I just want to add a quick, a quick question before you go.
Sure.
On the, I'm looking at the agenda here. I, I, did I miss something? We were supposed to talk about where we are in the housing protections plan and the master plan housing chapter.
Oh, um, that would be Karen updating and I, I think Roger, when you spoke to her, she said she didn't have any updates, but I can have Karen be in touch with Roger.
Yeah, that was the response that there was anything to update on it.
Okay.
I wasn't anticipating there'd be anything. It just was on the agenda.
Okay, then I'm good.
Jennifer, you had, sent us a PowerPoint presentation for.
Yeah, we, we ended up covering it was, I was just pulling the things that we reviewed in the bylaw and the PowerPoint, so.
That PowerPoint is something we can present.
Yeah, no, feel free to use it. It's very basic. That's not what I would use for your public hearing.
Oh, no?
No, because I think we, we can add the zoning map and we can add some other things. That was just a more, very streamlined for the board. So.
And, and you'll be available at town meeting?
On May sec, for May second for town meeting?
It's the first Tuesday.
Um, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk about that with Karen. I'm actually going to be away that week, so. But we'll figure it out. Either I will or Karen somehow.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Our, our need is presenting this.
Yeah, and the public hearing is
fourteen.
April fourteenth, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So. Again, I won't be on the board at that time, so I defer to other members if they have any comments on the town meeting. Again, I'm here. I just had to pause my video because of technology issues, I guess, in my end.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone. Have a nice rest of your night.
Good night.
All right. Go back to the agenda. You had do we have Kent still here?
Hello?
Yes.
I'm back.
Okay, well, I hope you enjoyed.
That was, that was, that was a lot. It was. It was. I learned a lot.
So are you able to share your screen?
I am. Just see.
I'm sorry, are you from the Lily Hill?
Lily Hill, yes. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, would you like to just go through it, Roger, or?
Yeah, just, okay, it's, it's, it's a very self-explanatory.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's, we have a, a six hundred foot cul-de-sac with a, everything abides by the rules, regulations of your subdivision. There's two lots that we brought before the planning board, these two lots here. They're already being in construction phase at this point. The lots exceed the forty thousand square feet. We're going to be, we'll get a sewer connecting to the sewer manhole that we already brought up to this location right at this point. That's right in the right of way. Existing town water will be connected to. Some of the, some of the questions that were brought up, I understand from the chairman was that there was that the sewer located in the in here, we added a sewer manhole that could be in a, and a sewer easement that could be connected to these two large properties in the back at some point. So sewer easement comes up and then comes down. So this person can access it this way and they can access it over this way as well. We'll leave the manhole here off the street for a future development.
Yeah, it's just that the other way for that property is up on one oh one and that could be reconstructed and.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this is easy. It's, I made it, we made it thirty feet wide versus, you know, a lot of times they put twenty-five feet, but I'm not a fan of that because you, you just can't get it, obviously. Do anything with a thirty, twenty-five foot easement, so. One of the biggest things that we, I'm going to expand this a little bit that we found out there. Everybody knows Murray Road and I'm sure the planning board has in the past, that swell that goes along Murray Road. If you've been out there and you've seen this, groundwater is about three and a half, four feet through test, test pits that we've done out in this location. Water comes off this hill quite a bit. So what we're going to do is we're going to clean that, that, that swell, which is pretty much, pretty has a lot of debris in it. And put riprap along inside that swell with pipes going underneath these two driveways and that driveway and the roadway, which is what we're very installed at this point. And that will allow the water to go down. And we then also will have to repave a little bit, little sections of, of Murray Road because it's, that swell is actually the, that kind of going into the property and eroded quite a bit in that location. So at that point, we, we would, we would redo it from here all the way, all the way down to this. I think there's a culvert that's down here. So wherever that culvert is, it's right here. You can see the swell. We would clean that, put riprap all the way down. And that would be the benefit of the town, obviously. We're not putting sidewalks. We would ask for a waiver on that only because there's no sidewalks anywhere on High Street or anywhere on this, so we would ask for a waiver on that. And that's about, that's pretty much it. It's, we have a, the detention basins, we have two of them here. Depending on that, and that's just what we calced at this point. We may have a small one on this one. If, like I said, if you went out there, a lot of water is just flowing off this hill from up, up above. And I think it's from, because this is further up in this area, it has a lot of it's, it's clear, it's defoliated up in this, this area. So it just waters keeps on coming down this area. Those detention bases would have homeowners association for cleaning out. So the town would not have to clean those basins out at any time. And I think that was it, Roger.
You're showing any lighting, street lighting?
No, that would also, that would also be a, a waiver. I forgot to bring that up, yes.
Or I think in, in other subdivision in town, the A M L P did the installation in, in Maine. So that it wasn't being built to someone else. That, you know, how do you have responsibility for a small light if, if you don't have any other method of doing it? So maybe you check with them on
Okay.
On providing them, whether, you know, one or two or whatever, whatever.
Well, we would have, we definitely, we're going to have an association anyway. So maybe, maybe, maybe one up here, maybe one down at the entranceway, one at the end of both ends. And we're going to have association anyways, so we include that in the association.
I mean, I would be, personally, I would be good without the sidewalks. It's a small cul-de-sac, but I, I would want some lighting in there.
Okay, how, and Ms. Butler, would, would you like one at the end and the beginning or would you want end, middle and beginning?
Well, you know, you're probably going to have families in there with children, so I would, if it, you know, one at the beginning, middle and, and then, so it's kind of well lit.
Very good.
That's just my personal preference.
Well, it's, I'm a family man.
You're not going to have, you know, the sidewalks, then the kids riding their bikes or whatever, walking up and down the street once it gets dusk.
And it is a, yeah, and it is a cul-de-sac and, you know, cul-de-sacs are notorious of, of play area for kids.
Yeah. Which is good. People, this is what people want for the, for the.
I think my opinion is these little developments are preferable to endlessly developing houses along the main roads. Here you can walk to a neighbor's house where it's most areas of town you can.
Yeah, and it's also, it's also, you know, these lots, as you can see, we've got, they're, they're oversized lots. So you're not, you know, it is a small development, but you're also getting some open space and getting the taxes from it at the same time.
What's the setback from, for the houses? Are the, are these fairly usable in locations of where the?
Yeah, yeah, because the red line is your zoning offset. So if you're from the pavement, we're looking at, that's not right. Somewhere around forty, forty-four, forty-five feet. This one, I mean, we can push those back slightly and it's going to, and I'll be honest, they might go back slightly because a lot of people like to look down at the roadway.
But, but it's your distributed areas are fairly close to the streets.
Yes, yeah, that's this is a one big pine grove, if you haven't been out there. Very, very, very big pine.
If you look at the other development in town that's under construction, you know, the, the houses are all on one side of the street fairly close. And then there's a couple lots which have five hundred foot driveways.
Yeah.
It's.
No, I, I, I think constructing these after these two in front. As a matter of fact, I'll disclose, my son is actually moving into this house from these people. So they're, the, these, the water coming out here. If you put a house back here, it would be a river coming down here. And it's just, we need to keep that vegetated.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No, not at this time for me.
Again, this is Billy and Mary.
Yeah.
I saw your email, Roger, and I thought you asked the questions that needed to be asked.
Yep. And I appreciate that. This wrote, this right of way fits in under your forty foot right of way, but we did and a twenty-two foot, I think, pavement, but we added, we cut it at twenty-four and fifty. Because of the side, because of the sidewalks. I think it gives a little more area for the people to walk down there right away.
Yeah, I, I think that sidewalks would just be a burden for the town and have almost no benefit to anybody.
I agree.
Not any other comments?
Curious. Are these, what style home are they? Are they?
They're, they're going to be more of a colonial than not, than not.
I make a motion.
Yeah.
And a four bedroom?
Four, four, it's going to be the minimum three. A couple of, we've already had, they, my client at Builders already has, already has some reservations for a four bedroom and a, I think, five bedroom.
Okay, and, and, and generally, what's the price point?
They're going to be somewhere, yeah, somewhere around between three, four hundred to, I'm going to say four to four fifty. They can be very similar to the, to the houses that are.
What we, we're right along with that, which is.
Are you putting any sustainability features in the houses?
I don't know.
Energy efficiencies and.
Well, we have to, we have to abide by.
Anything like that.
No, no, we, we obviously abide by, you know, the. No, no, we'd be, we'd obviously abide by, you know, the, uh, mass building.
Sewer.
Water and sewer, that's about it, yeah.
It's, it's feasible.
It is. It's, the, the solar would be tough only because the, uh, very high growth.
Yeah, the trees and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we don't have a vote or anything on this, right?
It's just. Now, we do. Well, we do. Improve the preliminary plan, which then sets them up to be used, to use this for the next stage, the definitive plan.
Okay.
Um, so the items, we, really, the only one is, uh, lighting, that we can, um, to make a motion to approve the plan with, um, to include lighting and, um, accept a waiver, grant a waiver for the sidewalks. And, and restoration of the swell along Murray.
That's right. I was just gonna bring that up, yes.
And repair of any pavement disturbed, um. However. Over extra pavement gets installed would be a benefit on that road, but.
Yeah, it's, it's. I, I'll, I'll go on record in saying that I, that it's probably gonna need an overlay all the way, you know. After, after they build this road, this, it's gonna get chewed up pretty good.
Yeah, uh, by the time you builds, what, six or eight houses a year.
Yep.
Um, at, at least from this road up to. At least the area disturbed towards High Street.
Well, I think, yeah, it's actually disturbed right where they started with the, uh, sewer manhole down here.
Yeah.
But I think it's from this point, and which is also the low point.
Yeah.
All to, to this point. So, yeah, I, I, if you want, you, I don't, I don't see a problem that, you know, saying we can put an overlay, put that in the conditions as well, I, I, I mean, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely gonna need it, and I think the highway.
Yeah.
What street do you want that on, Roger? An overlay on?
Murray.
Murray Road for the areas disturbed, um, you know, either by installation of the sewer and utilities or just construction vehicle, construction truck. But I think tho, those are my concerns.
Richard, Richard gave you a motion. I'll second it.
Okay. Um, we'll do roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Yeah.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Archer Hoyt, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Forty to zero, thank you, Ken.
And we'll, uh, see you sooner than later, I'm sure.
If you've gotten interest, then you're planning to go ahead and not.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, it's, the building season is upon us, so.
And not waiting out the lumber prices?
They, that, no, they, yeah, that's, they are actually, they're, these two houses that are there, they, they, they back, look back three months, I think, is pushing them back. So, thank you, people. Have, have a wonderful evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, it doesn't look like the gentleman's here for the A and R.
I thought, I, I thought I saw an email that said they were pushing that off. They weren't ready for this meeting. They were pushing it off to the next one in April.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I saw that email, but I couldn't find it just now when I was looking for it.
No.
I just remember it. All right, I'm getting old and my memory is not as good as it used to be.
No, that, that's fine, I would have to accuse myself anyway. We've got minutes and then just a couple of comments when we get to schedule, so.
Okay, so what do we have for minutes? The ones I sent today or yesterday for last week? We want to prove those?
I move approval. I read them before our meeting today, so.
I'll second.
I will, these are the ones for the tenth?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was, I was staying because I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
But I can do a roll call vote, so, uh, two of the minutes as discussed of March tenth, so Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yep.
Okay, the motion carries.
And I just add that the meetings for the twenty-fourth, I, I needed to sort of check the recording because I didn't take very good minutes, and, um.
That's February twenty-fourth?
Yep, uh, that's February twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I just got an email during this meeting from Mary saying she found the recording. The recording was not on the website, so it's gonna get posted tomorrow on the website, and, and then I'll, uh, just clean up my, my notes a little bit and, and get that off for us to approve at the next meeting.
Okay, um, she had sent me an email last week about you're behind on your minutes.
Yeah. Um, there's one other minutes that she's behind on too, and I, or at least they're not posted. When I went on the, uh, plan, we're, we're missing, we're missing February tenth, and those we approved. So I don't know why they're not up there.
Okay, when did you approve them?
I don't know. We'd have to go back and look at minutes to see when.
Yeah.
Was that at the last week?
It might, it might have been at February twenty-fourth, which is.
Well, okay.
What was the date again for them?
February tenth is missing. February twenty-third was the joint meeting with, um, with open space.
Yeah, I can re, I'll re, well, yeah, I'll look through, I have them, Roger, you want me to send them to you or Mary to?
Yeah. Yeah, just send them to me, yeah. Send them to me.
I'll send them to you.
So February twenty-fourth is in my bucket, but all, but, but March tenth is done just today. March twenty-fourth is in Lindsay's hands, and the tenth and twenty-third should be, you know.
Okay.
Are, are out there and done. They probably were approved on February twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And, uh.
There, there were some we approved, like three of them at one meeting, and I posted those.
Yeah. Well, they're not posted, is, is basically what's, we're saying, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I just resent them to you, Roger, so.
Okay, so we'll get them on tonight.
Yeah.
Very good. Now, I think we have, uh, all right, we need to discuss schedule for next meetings. We have April seventh, which I think we need to do the bylaw preparation. And the public hearing will be the fourteenth. Do we want to limit it to just the bylaw public hearing and, and nothing else that night?
If we can.
Okay, all right, and, um, we get to down whether the last meeting in April is the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth.
I, I had recommended we stick with the twenty-first since that's your last meeting. Because you're, uh, you're vacationing on the twenty-eighth, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we wouldn't want you to miss your last meeting.
Sounds good to me.
So.
I, I mean, I, I wanted to go back to the.
The only thing I'm gonna say is, is, um, what happens if you don't meet, if you don't meet the twenty-eighth after the election? You don't have a chairman unless you.
That's what we would do, that we're not meeting, why? We, we do all the business we were planning to do on the twenty-eighth, on the twenty-first.
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
First.
Um, twenty-first, we do all the business there. I just wanna go back to the, we're talking about having a meeting on the seventh and a meeting on the fourteenth and a meeting on the twenty-first. And I guess I would ask that, I know the reason the public hearing is on the fourteenth. Do we really expect anybody to show up for this public hearing?
No, Marshall, Marshall will show up.
Yeah. And, well, that's true. Marshall will show up and Marshall will take a lot of time.
Yeah, so.
But, but I'm, I'm sort of thinking, you know, why have, yeah, combine the seventh and the fourteenth.
I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, just do the, and have our next meeting on the fourteenth and then have our last meeting in April on the twenty-first, and we're moving it off the fourth, fourth, um, week just be, because of you, Roger.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, the only thing, um, it's just if we, yeah, all right.
So we'll meet on the fourteenth?
We're set. We said we don't have to meet anymore until the fourteenth, provided the, there's no, nothing needed for the bylaws. If we just resolve the way things we discussed tonight, we'll present that, we have to issue it, make it available next week. And then the twenty-first, any revisions from the hearing? Or actually, I think I posted it on the fourteenth as the hearing, and then any, uh, bylaw modifications that night. What would you do with the twenty-fourth? Um, so then you meet the twenty-first, then you'll have the election and you won't meet again until May. And, um.
We'll meet on the twelfth, what would be the next one?
May twelfth, okay.
Twelfth and May twenty-six would be the.
That's.
Two May dates.
There is one person who, um, submitted a scenic road application for Packard Hill.
Either. When do we have to see them? By what deadline?
I, I, I talked to them yesterday. It's, um, and I drove by. I think it's the one like we had up on Young Road where there isn't anything. There aren't any to be cut, there aren't any stone walls. It's an existing cart path. Um, if that's, if that's the case, and the local members agree, um, we don't need to have a hearing. I did talk to the applicant and they are fine with, um, meeting in May. The first meeting in May, if we have to do it, that gives Heather time to advertise, because she's on vacation now.
They're not cutting down any trees, right?
And if, if that
Yeah.
rule is the case, and, um, we don't need to have a hearing. If, if it looks like there is something, then we have time in April to.
Okay.
Advertise.
Okay.
And, and, and they're fine with going past the thirty days and meeting the first, doing it the first meeting in May. It also avoids any, uh, bridging the election. But your first meeting after the election, you know, provided that member gets one in. But right now, it doesn't look like there's anything, but do that at the end of April because I requested that it's an extension if it's required. And there was a, I had some correspondence yesterday about some of the properties on Moore Road, which is the last remaining previously approved stalled subdivision up off of Holt Road. If anyone, Richard, you might remember that one. Do you, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, there was interest, just a question about, uh, right now they're delinquent on their taxes on all those lots, and the question was if they just paid the taxes, can they, you know, proceed and apply for a building permit? There's already one house there, so it appears that, um, that's a possibility. Again, we haven't heard from them in about ten years. It's changed hands a couple of times. But I noticed on the last, the one house that's there was sold a year or two ago, and, and the deed does reference the homeowners association and such for, um, maintenance of the, the cistern. So, um, the files are, you know, Heather got the files out yesterday, and I think I'll, I'll forward you. She had scanned in the approved plans so that, uh, if I didn't forward to her already, she sent it to me this afternoon, so, um, that's something that could become active again if there's interest.
They came to the conservation committee, one of the previous owners after the one who went default, who defaulted, and they asked the conservation commission if they could just use the same orders of conditions. And I was on at that time, and we said, no, you can't do that, so they're gonna have to go back through conservation again, I believe, unless they've already done it, but I haven't heard of them.
Yeah, things may have expired.
Yeah, and the, the site is so torn up, it's not the same place that it was when it was originally broken open, vastly different.
But, uh, just a heads up that that may be coming alive again. But, you know, someone, there were still remains of snowbanks from plowing, so it is getting plowed and looks like the cistern is being monitored. No. As Skip described it previously, it was a moonscape.
Oh, it's like ground zero.
That it's, uh.
At the top.
Difficult there, yeah. And the last thing we had was somebody when they was looking at buying it and wanted to reconfigure that, the unbuilt portion of the road, just because of the steep topography. And have the second portion just be a cul-de-sac off the Holt Road. Now, I don't know how that affects the other, you know, the further in the development, it makes it, makes it much longer called, you know, um, dead end road than the plan shows, so. Anyway, it's about time that one got some interest with the that was in business now.
Would it be nice to stabilize the site one way or the other, because it's still just.
Yeah, it's a bit like Whitney Park. Another distributary. So, given that, are we ready to have a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yes.
Archer Hoyt, yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, you too, thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Good.
No good.